I'd like to call the March 11th Board of Education Preliminary Budget Hearing and Special Action Meeting open. If we could have a moment of silence? Laxley?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The Open Public Meetings Act, in accordance with the provisions of the Open Public Meetings Act, a public notice of this meeting has been sent to board members, all district schools, the Herald News, Suburban Trends, The Record, The Messenger, West Milford Town Hall, the County Superintendent's Office, the Board Attorney, Cable Vision of Warwick and West Milford TV 77, and posted in the administrative building. Copies of the board meeting calendar resolution were provided to all local media, Town Hall, Township Library, and all district schools. We'll call, please, Mr. Schultz?
Mr. Sitovich, Mrs. Dwyer?
Here.
Mrs. Jergensen?
This isn't working here.
Mr. Lippie?
Here.
Ms. Lockwood?
Here.
Mrs. Markward?
Mrs. Raccano?
Here.
Mrs. Van Dyke?
Here.
Mr. Guarino?
Thank you, Mr. Schultz. Superintendent's Report, Dr. Kitchen?
Yes, Superintendent's Report this evening is going to be our budget presentation, so Mr. Schultz and I will be doing that together. All right, so tonight we're going to be going through our budget presentation. Obviously, board members, we have had significant conversations about this in each of our committees, and this is a process that goes back into December is really when it starts, when we have our early meetings with different departments and buildings and so on, to just begin discussing expenditures for the upcoming school year. Again, this is for the '25-'26 school year, so that starts July 1st to July 1st. We're going to go through a lot of the specifics here this evening, just to go over exactly what it is that we're presenting to you. I'm going to go over a handful of slides here, a lot of the specifics Mr. Schultz is going to be sharing with you, but I will start with some of the highlights of the budget for this year. So a couple of things that I want to make you aware of on these highlights. So first is the maintenance of, we're maintaining all of our current program offerings. So the courses that we've been offering, we are offering, I know that has been a real big focus, is not allowing our budgetary situation, particularly with the cuts over the past several years, to have a significant negative impact on the education that is provided here in West Milford. So maintaining all of our current programs was the goal, and it's incredibly difficult to do that with the loss of funds that we've had and the inflation of all different costs, some of which we'll be highlighting here as we move forward, but that's where we're at with that. The other thing, in an effort to try to be as fiscally responsible as possible to the taxpayers, we've really tried to maximize outside revenue sources to support our programs, a lot of different grant opportunities, I know we've discussed many of them here, but we're using grant funding to support some of our computer science programs. We've really tried to increase our tuition students in our special education programs, particularly here at Highlander Academy, with an increased focus on that going forward as well, because obviously that is an additional revenue source that can help offset some other costs. We are utilizing the revenues from food services to offset some of the other expenses. That's something that Mr. Schultz was able to make happen, it was really helpful to us this year, but it's another highlight going forward. And similarly, this is something that is new, is we're looking to use more of our SAC programs' revenues to help offset the cost of some of those expenses. So it's a difference in how the money is allocated, but it does make a big difference in trying to be as efficient as possible with the money. And actually, another one that I know we discussed here is, Mr. Schultz was able to work with our bank to increase the interest rate that we receive by doing a multi-year agreement. Those are, it's a significant dollar amount. I don't remember what the, what it averaged out to monthly, but we were getting a large dollar amount that we'd never had before as a revenue source, just from interest on the accounts that we have with our bank. So that's a big one. And then another highlight, again, you've been made aware of this particularly recently, but some increased opportunities for our students through our Highlander Pathways program at the high school, but there is no added expense to that because it's programs and courses that already exist. So all we're doing is finding ways to maximize the effectiveness of the program we have and the opportunities it creates for our students as they leave us in 12th grade. So again, those pathways, which we're hoping to increase over the next couple of years, are just opportunities for students to get these industry-recognized credentials when they leave us because of taking a specific series of courses, so that's really exciting. We have a limited need for large-scale projects in this upcoming budget. You know, we've had a few things that have come up, but a lot of them are things that have already been budgeted for. So the UGL Septic Project, there's already been money budgeted for that. We still don't know what the exact cost is going to be, but there is money set aside for that. And then the UGL Window and Door Project is something that we have the ability to utilize capital reserve for. That's what that's there for, your capital reserve is there for those capital projects. I know that we would like to see a healthier number in capital reserve for the size of the district and some of these long-term projects. It's part of what we're discussing in the updating of our long-range facility plan, but again, the money's there to be used for things like this, so it doesn't fall on our annual budget, it doesn't fall directly to the taxpayers in that way. We have some smaller-scale maintenance projects that we're going to be doing, but things that don't have a significant impact on the overall budget. And again, like I said, we're using capital reserve funds for some of these other projects, and part of that is related to those school security walkthroughs that we were able to do with the state police, where they were identifying projects that are important for us to be doing, and we have the funds and capital reserve for those. Another important one we wanted to draw attention to is the DiGos Field Turf Project, as you are aware. You know, it's a conversation we've been having in conjunction with the town. It is in this budget, so you'll see that project show up in the budget, but it is not being funded by the district. It's district property, so the money has to come through us, but we are actually going to be receiving money from the town for that, so that's a zero sum for the district. This is a graph I'm sure you are very tired of seeing. It just shows you that, you know, from 2017-18 until now, the district has lost about $9 million. We have bottomed out, you know, we've got a little bit more, we've got about $300,000 more for this coming year than we did this past year, but that percentage increase is based on a much smaller total dollar amount from the state, so therefore the increase in total dollars is a much smaller amount. It's not something that is a large portion of our budget at this point. Most of our budget is funded locally, and unfortunately, this is really the design of what the state was intending to do to districts like ours. They were trying to put it back onto local taxpayers in these S2 districts. We fall into that category, it's very frustrating, and it's really challenging. We hear some of these other districts that are receiving all these extra dollars and they don't know how to spend it all, whereas we're trying to scrape together every penny just to maintain our current level of programming. So it's stressful, but it is a good reminder about how much money has disappeared, and just think about the increase in costs in your own personal lives, just at the grocery store, any utilities, everything, over that same span, from 17-18 until now, to lose that much on the revenue side, it's really, really challenging for us to maintain the level of education in the school district with that much less money when things cost that much more. And again, you can kind of see those percentage changes, that's just, you know, another way of showing you how much money we've lost here. So again, it's about $9 million that we have less than we did, you know, several years ago.
Over the course of the cuts comparing 17-18 to 18-19 versus next year, it's a total of over $45 million of state aid. Should we have remained at the 17-18 rate, it would have been $45 million more that the district could have had available through state aid to spend on schools, projects, and anything else that the district needs that we've had over the last number of years. So you see, the first couple of years, they took $400,000 in 2018-19, and it just gradually got more and more and more, to the point where we were over $9 million down, like Dr. Kitchen said, when we got to the '23-'24 year, '24-'25, and then for '25-'26 next year, we got $300,000 back, but we're still $8 million, over $8 million short from where we were in 17-18.
I think if you just look at that total dollar amount of $45,000...
Million.
I'm sorry, $45 million.
Don't get it twisted.
If you look at that total dollar amount of $45 million, that would cover the cost of our entire long-range facility plan, all capital projects, things like that, that we have upcoming, and that's aside from anything related to the actual education that we provide, programs that we have and so on, staffing needs. So it's really, it's challenging, because all those things need to fit into a much, much smaller dollar amount, and here we sit again, $45 million behind where we otherwise would be, trying to make it work.
This slide right here will just demonstrate some of the grant-funded programs we've had, that have also been cut over the last number of years. Most notably, this current year, we've lost over $231,000 in just Title I funding. It gradually went down from '22-'23 to '23-'24, and then it got more than cut in half for '24-'25. As you'll see, all the other entitlement grants, they've also been slashed over the years. The only one that went up for the one year was Title IV, and that went down this year as well. IDA has remained pretty consistent, it went up one year, and then it went down for this year, and obviously not sure where we stand for '25-'26 yet on any of these entitlements, but I'm assuming it's not going to be more than what we got for this year. Another area the district's looking to focus on is extraordinary aid. We received $2.1 million in '22-'23, and last year we received a little under $1.2 million, so that's something the district's going to work very hard on to try to maximize the funding there. And then we're going to work with Dr. Rest's office on that, to maximize all the funding that we could possibly get for that. But also, there's no guarantees at how much the state will fund that grant, so we can submit all the expenses that we have that will qualify, but we don't know if it'll be funded to the full potential that it could be. And then at the bottom, I just highlighted all of the ARP-ESR grants that expired this past September. In total, it was over $2,696,000 between all the grants that we used for all of our programs to support ENCORE programs, STEM camps, many of these mental health support, after-school programs, summer programs. So those are all items that we've either had to find in the operating budget or programs that we can no longer support.
Even looking at all of the, even looking at all the money we lost last year, if you just compare last year to this year, that dollar amount, that $271,000 seen in the bottom right corner there, that puts us, even with the state aid increase of about $300,000, you're looking at, you know, an almost zero sum there from outside revenue sources. You know, they can say that they're giving you more money in this line, but if you're getting it taken away in other places, then we're still coming out behind.
So this chart here will show the comparison of the adjusted budget for the current year, '24-'25, versus what's proposed tonight for '25-'26. Starting at the top, special programs, that's special education programs. There's a proposed increase to that for over $400,000, about a 5% change. Regular education, that is pretty consistent. When I went through the budgets of all the principals and supervisors and everyone that submitted it, we went through every account, every supply line, comparing it to what we spent over the past years, and really trying to economize what we have available and what we're putting into this budget for next year. Moving down the list, tuition, Dr. Rest is working to bring back some of the added district tuition students that we have, and our PCTI tuition, we had an adjustment for this year, but that went up a little bit compared to last year as well. But overall, we're projecting a negative 1% increase in that line. Speech OT/PT services, we're trying to keep that as consistent as possible to still have the services for the children, for the students, but trying to keep it as consistent as possible and as budgetary-friendly as possible. CST, that had a slight increase of 3%. This all includes salary increases as well, so that's built into those numbers. General administration, you'll see a large decrease in there. That's mostly because in the '24-'25 number is included the contract award we just awarded to LAN, I believe in the December meeting, to continue the remediation and testing down at the transportation depot. That'll be, that's budgeted and accounted for in '24-'25. It won't be included in the budget for next year. That project will still be going on, but we still need to budget for it because the funds have already been encumbered. And also included in that is our audit fee, which rolled over to '24-'25 because the audit does not take place until after the school year ends, so we usually don't pay that until the current school year. So that's the biggest portion of that $222,000 decrease in general administration. On school administration, the biggest portion of that is everything that's needed at the schools, and then also the salaries of the administration and teacher, pardon me, the principals and secretaries at the schools. Central services, that went down. We had a retirement in our technology department, so what we budgeted there, there's some breakage in there for replacements, so that number's gone down as well. Operations and maintenance, that number went down, but included in that decrease is actually a large increase anticipated for utilities. Our utility providers are providing, projecting somewhere between a 20% to 30% to 40% increase in utilities, which I'm sure everyone's seeing in their bills at home as well, but that's buried inside, that actually line actually went down, because this is the line where we included what Dr. Kitchen mentioned earlier about the CAFAids, they're charged in there. We're not budgeting for that, we're charging that to the Food Service Fund, and also for, we're trying to offset some of the custodial salary costs using some of our SAC of revenue that we get. So that's part, that contributed to the decrease in that line. Student transportation, it just continues to go up. The CPI for next year is 3.57, so we have a lot of added district runs for special education, for trips, and we also have our in-district drivers, but we would love to have more in-district drivers that we would have available to do these runs, because some of these runs for added district costs are $600, $700, $800 a day. So just a little plug here, if there's any bus drivers out there who'd like to apply to West Milford, please, please call Trish Peruli.
One thing I want to highlight when it comes to the transportation, so typically, you will, when you're looking at out-of-district placements and so on, you'll have contingencies built in for additional out-of-district placements, or for the routes that we haven't filled, but we would like to fill. The reason those are not, so we've tried to reduce this as much as we can, some of those things are not being budgeted for, because our hope is, on the out-of-district side, you know, the hope is that there's a, we're higher than the average in terms of out-of-district placements, so we think that without putting those contingencies in, there's a few anticipated students returning, we're hoping that sort of creates those contingencies when those students return. And then with the regular routes, rather than budgeting for these additional routes, what we realize is that the cost of some of the out-of-district routes can offset that, because if we hire a new driver, it means we can take away one of the out-of-district routes, and it's going to more than pay for the new driver. So we don't need to build in additional contingencies for new hires, because that'll take care of itself when it happens.
The next line down is, obviously, it's 51% of our non-personnel cost is employee benefits. It keeps going up, the premiums keep going up, and the contribution we're getting from our employees is going down as people are switching over to the educator health plan. So that plan, I mentioned it during last year's presentation, that's based, the contributions are based on salaries percentages, and the direct access and traditional plans, which a lot of people are switching from, are based on health benefit premium percentages. So as the costs for the premiums keep going up, we're getting less back from the employees. I remember a couple of years ago, Mrs. Francisco budgeted about $3.2 million. In this budget, I have about $2.3 million budgeted as the offset for the employee contribution for the benefits. And I see that a lot of the plans are not different, and people are, as a word of mouth, and they talk to their coworkers, are switching over to this plan depending on their needs. So that's a very, very large portion of this budget, and it's not just the actual premium increases, it's that aspect as well. Other expenditures include our ENCORE program, our bilingual program, athletics, co-curricular, reading specialists, nursing guidance, media specialists, and our departmental supervisors are in that line as well. And that's pretty consistent, we, that line actually decreased by a little under a percentage for this year, for next year. Facilities, the big fluctuation here, like Dr. Kitchen mentioned, is the amount we included in the budget for the DiGos Field Project that we're working on with the township. And as Dr. Kitchen mentioned, that's not an item that's coming directly out of our budget, it's our property, we need to, the funds have to come from us, but the township is providing the money for the field and the lighting that is going up there. Special revenue budget, the $9.63, $3.77, that is 80% of our entitlements from this current year for Title I and IDA, because those are the only budget numbers we have available. So that's what the general guidance is to budget, between the 75% or 80% of those grant entitlements. And our debt service budget, that is our debt payments that are due for the coming school year for the high school and middle school roof referendum projects, that I believe expires in 2029 is the last payment scheduled for that. So overall, including all those items, it's a budget from $82,970,000 to $223,000. And this is chart here, this just shows a breakdown of all the expenses that I just went through as a percentage point of our actual budget. So you see, special programs, 9.7%, regular education's a little under 24%, tuition, 3.6%, related services, 2.8%, study teams, 3.1%. Then you go to our general admin and school admin, and you combine that, that's about 5% total of the budget for the two administration lines. And then central service, which is IT and the business office, that's 1.4% of the total budget. Operations and maintenance is 8.3%, student transportation's right around the same amount in total budget of 8.6%, and then you get the employee health benefits, which I just touched on, which is 23.5. That's almost, that's actually more, a little under what we're spending on our regular education portion of our budget. And then the other expenditures, and then the facilities is 3.5%, but that's obviously a little inflated this year, because it includes the $2.7 million we've included for the DiGos Field Project. And this is pretty much the same slide, this shows it in a different way. This shows the dollar amounts and the breakdown in a pie chart of the same expenses that I just discussed as a percentage point, but this shows the actual dollar amounts associated with it. So you'll see that the benefits are a gigantic portion of it, and regular education, and then obviously to a lesser extent, special education, but still $7.9 million of our total budget. And then these are all, it corresponds with the percentages that I just went through on the last slide. To show this off a little differently, I know we used this slide last year, salaries, the salary lines in our budget is 54% of our total budget, the benefits portion is 24% of our total budget. We added the slide this year for the large amount for the township revenue for the field is 3%, but everything else is 19% of the budget. So when you think of transportation, all the supplies, everything else that we need to make the district run, we have to fit somehow into 19% of this total budget that we have, because basically salary and benefits is more than three-quarters of what that total budget is. This is a breakdown of the revenues, which obviously is the same dollar amount on the other side, $82,970 to $223,000. The number of the tax levy, as Dr. Kitchen mentioned earlier, that is 82.5% of what our total budget is. It's coming from the tax levy. It used to be a much smaller number when we had much greater input on state aid, but now state aid has dropped to... State federal aid is 8.06% of our total budget, which obviously going back, if we had $9 million today, that's a much larger number that we've had over the last number of years. Budgeted fund balance, we've actually, as Mr. Sitovich mentioned at our audit presentation, the amount of budgeted fund balance that we have has been decreasing steadily over the last number of years, just because expenses have been going up and the amount of money that we've had available has been going down. So we've reduced the amount of fund balance that we're using this budget, that's about 3.2% of the budget. Tuition revenue is less than half a percentage of the budget, even though we're trying to get as many tuition students here as we can for our Highlander Academy program. Special revenues is a little over 1% of our budget. Debt service, as I talked about, is a set payment from the high school and middle school roof project referendums, that's 0.73% of our budget, that's the, for the revenues and the state aid we receive for debt service. Miscellaneous, that's our miscellaneous revenues for our facility rentals, interest, even as we talked earlier about the increase in interest that we received, it's still less than, a little over 0.5% of our total budget. And our reserve withdrawals for this upcoming year is, we have $175,000 coming out of maintenance reserve to support our maintenance expenses, and we're only taking $30,000 out of our capital reserve for the security, for the all-purpose front doors at a couple of our elementary schools that were, came up in our security audit. Our fund balance, or our balance in our capital reserve account, I would love to do everything I can to build that balance up. It's definitely not big enough for the size of the district and the amount of things that we can do to improve our facilities here, but we have to try to build that balance up so it can fund some large-scale projects that'll be in our long-range facility plan that's being updated right now. And then we also have the one-time revenue for this year for the field project, that's 3.25% of our total revenues, that's coming from the township.
So just looking at salaries by category here, the main thing this slide is intended to show you is that the money's going where you want it to go. The money's going into the classrooms, it's going to the teachers. And I highlight that for you, one, because a properly functioning district, the money should be going directly towards the education, but, you know, obviously, the concern, when you see that number that high, you want to make sure we have the appropriate number of staff members in that category, and if you look at the bottom right corner, you can see these, the ratios. So our district student-to-teacher ratio is 11 to 1, which is directly in line with the median for the state. So we are where we belong when it comes to, you know, again, having the appropriate number of teachers in the classroom. And we really don't have control, you know, you saw in those increases and in those percentages, particularly with the benefits, but also salaries, that's a massive, massive chunk of our total budget. But keep in mind, we do not have control over what those benefits costs are, and even the salary increases, those are contractually negotiated, so we have some control over those things, but not on a year-to-year basis. So the only thing we have control over on a year-to-year basis is number of staff. And obviously, our goal is to not negatively impact programs, so we want to make sure we're as fiscally responsible as we can be with the correct number of classes and sections and so on, and we look at those things, and we've done that at the committee level, but what we're not trying to do is reduce that, those salaries by cutting a bunch of teachers and then resulting in a situation where all of a sudden, you know, we're far behind the rest of the state in class sizes and student-to-teacher ratio and so on. Another thing I want to point out for you on this slide is you'll see the non-instructional aids there, and it looks like it's almost nothing. That's something that is a credit to Mr. Schultz, that is, when we mentioned earlier, utilizing the revenues that come in through cafeteria and things like that, that's where those dollars are being utilized in the budget to limit the need to budget for the staff members associated with it, right? So cafeteria aids, things like that. So it's a great job by Mr. Schultz of recognizing where he knows dollars are going to be coming in, and utilizing those dollars back in the budget so that we don't have to, so we don't end up with more money than we need. Basically, what that's going to do is it's going to limit the surplus that gets put out at the end of the year, but keep in mind that the surplus that gets put out at the end of the year, that's what goes into capital reserve. You don't want to have no surplus, that's the money that goes into capital reserve, that's the money you use for those capital projects, but also, you know, we mentioned the budgeted fund balance, that's where those dollars are propping up future budgets. We're trying to bring that number down, Mr. Schultz has worked to get that number down from a much higher number a couple of years ago, but it's still a high enough number that it is of concern, because when the budget doesn't spit out those dollars, you're going to have a year where you have a much bigger hole to fill. You know, if there's no money to put back into that budget and fund balance, you're going to be in a lot of trouble there.
As Dr. Kitchen just mentioned, here's our fund balance utilization going back to the 17-18 school year. We used 2.9, we've been around 2.9, fluctuating up and down a little bit, but we had those couple of years where we need, basically to make the budget work, we had a budget of $4 million and over $4 million. Last year was 3.1, and this year it's down to 2.6. It's partially because we don't want to keep going to that revenue source, so it's not sustainable to keep using your fund balance, but also because we have to, because obviously we've had less, the cost's going up and the less revenues coming in, we've had to do that in order to actually make responsible decisions for the district. Just going back to the last slide, was the non-personnel operating costs. This shows everything outside of salaries that we have to include in the budget, so you'll see over 50%, I believe it's 51% of our total non-personnel operating costs are health benefits. So that other 49%, that includes the facilities, cleaning repairs, custodial needs, that's the 1.978, 566. And then we have $1.2 million in there, that's for the tuition costs. $4.4 million, that's transportation. Utilities and energy, that's about 1.2. $426, some of the other costs I mentioned earlier. 2.9, 2.9 is the actual tuition amount, and then you get to the supplies and the things everyone needs in the classroom, that is, that is under, that's the green tab right there, that's a little over $1 million. Technology, that's some, most, our biggest expense for technology is obviously our cybersecurity and our Chromebooks that we need for the classroom, that's a little under $1 million. And then our insurance, that's not our health insurance, that's our liability insurance. workers' comp insurance, property insurance, vehicle insurance, that's about one-point-four. And that's just projected basing, using about a ten percent increase based on last year's numbers. I'm still waiting on the actual numbers, what it'll be for next year. So I'm really hoping it won't be more than ten percent, but that, that, that number reflects a ten percent increase. And in the two-point-eight, two-million-eight-sixty-six, that is the capital outlay. That includes the two-point-seven from the township for the Daigos Field Project. And then the difference is some of the other projects and equipment that Mr. Glenn put in his budget for some groundskeeping, custodial equipment needs that we have, as well as facility projects at the, at the schools. This slide right here, this shows our general fund tax levy trend over the last ten years. In sixteen, seventeen, and seventeen, eighteen, there were zero percent increases on the tax levy, and truth be told, I believe we're still chasing those two percent increases that we didn't have on those years. The state aid cuts started coming at that time, and then the tax levy went up to two-point-seven-five, and then one-point-nine-nine, and then two-point-five, and then two percent, and then one-point-seven-eight. And obviously, you see the large increase in twenty-three, twenty-four to four-point-four-eight percent. That included a health benefit adjustment in that year, similar to what we're proposing for this year. Last year, for the four-point-seven-three percent increase, that was a health benefit adjustment, and we also had that tax levy adjustment where we increased the budget by a million dollars after the budget was already passed, but we increased that in June because the state gave us the right to raise taxes one more time to try to make our budget meet. And basically, that was their lifeline they threw at us, was basically go to the taxpayers for more money for all state aid cuts that we received all the years. We were authorized to go up, out for four-point-two million for a total of nine-point-nine percent tax increase, but the board felt that was way too much, so we went out for another million that raised our tax levy. I think it was a three-point-two-seven originally, so we raised it to four-point-seven-three with that adjustment. This four-point-seven-seven percent increase for this year in the general fund tax, tax levy, that includes the health benefit adjustment, the use of bank cap from the twenty-two, twenty-three budget cycle, this is the last year you could use that, and the two percent tax levy that we, we normally can go up to.
So just speaking to that a little bit, so that, that four-point-seven-seven percent, and you can see again, the healthcare adjustment there being one-point-six million dollars, that's not an arbitrary number. That is because of the increased cost of healthcare. So it's money that is necessary based on what it should cost us to run the district going forward. Look, I think one thing that's really important, and I know all of you are aware of this as board members, we've been discussing this, but I think it's important for, for our community to know as well, nobody wants to see the four-point-seven-seven number. Nobody wants to see a number that is, that is higher than is necessary. The, the only people that perhaps want to see those numbers are the people in Trenton down at the state level who have made the decision in cutting all of this funding and that they were going to require that funding to increase at the local level. They weren't saying that we had more money than we needed, they were saying they were giving us more money than they were willing to, and we should make up the rest ourselves. So it's not surprising that the numbers are going up, particularly when you look at the increased percentages that you're seeing everywhere else in your life. Running a school is going to go up by a similar percentage to what everything else in life is costing with inflation. And here we sit where, keep in mind, that four-point-seven-seven percent is not an actual four-point-seven-seven percent of our total operating budget, all right? That's just the, the local tax levy, which while that is the largest portion of our operating budget, the, the real percentage of increase that we have to work with is less than that in a time when most costs in your life are more than that. It's tough. It's, it's really, really tough. It's not something that we're happy about. We've tried to find every possible dollar, those you and sitting in committee with us, particularly opposite finance, but really all of our committees, as we've gone through and tried to find every dollar that we can, try to find every place that we can take things away from. This four-point-seven-seven is not coming with the Cadillac of, of changes in the district, it's not, right? We took a lot of things out, a lot of things out. You know, it's limiting the amount of classroom tech that we can purchase for next year, which is going to potentially cause issues down the line as we say, well, look, you know, we didn't, we weren't able to put as many new devices in. We're going to end up with obsolete, more obsolete devices down the line. That's student devices, that's classroom devices. Again, we're, we're not adding a lot of capital projects. Well, that could start to stack those projects up down the line. So it's, it's, it's concerning that we have to be at a number like this that we're putting in front of you, but the reality is that for the past several months, we have been working to get that number as low as we possibly can, and this is where we're able to get to. There just aren't a lot of other dollars to be had, as you are aware from the conversations we have, we've had in, in committees.
So moving forward, here's the budget calendar for the remainder of the budget season. Obviously, tonight, March eleventh is the presentation for board approval of the preliminary budget. If the board were to approve this budget tonight, we'd be able to send it down to the county by next week. I have to get a lot of other supporting documentation together before we send it down, so it's, it's due on the nineteenth to the county. The county has until April twenty-first to approve the budget, and then we can advertise the preliminary budget. April twenty-ninth is our scheduled public budget hearing for the final adoption of the budget, assuming everything goes well with the county and everything gets approved. And then obviously, on May first, within forty-eight hours, the board has to post the district budget to the district website for a public's view after it's been adopted. And this just reiterates that the user-friendly budget after it's adopted will be posted to the district website. And that's pretty much it for the presentation. So if anyone has any questions, feel free to ask.
You can hear me now, yeah? Two mark, mostly, one more, is that right? Couple things, I'd like to see if you can clarify for other people and myself and things like that. We have on here, not to put you on the spot, you've got a couple of different percentage increases. Total operating budget, you noted at four-point-seven-five percent. District budget, three-point-eight-four percent. Tax levy, four-point-seven-three, with four-point-seven-seven as a debt services. Right? Just kind of put that in, speak for anyone at home and anyone like yourself.
Sure. The overall budget increase is three-point-eight-four percent. That's the slide that we showed on the budget comparison slide, showed current to propose. That's the total budget, including debt service and special revenue, three-point-eight-four percent. As Dr. Kitchen just mentioned, the four-point-seven-seven percent increase, that's just the general fund tax levy piece. So that's just on the tax levy portion, that doesn't include our state aid. So the net of that, with the state aid, the other increases and decreases, comes out to the three-point-eight, three-point-eight-four percent. And the four-point-seven-three, if you'll notice on this slide, the debt service payment due for next year goes down seven-thousand-two-hundred-and-sixty dollars. So our need for the tax levy to offset, to offset that payment is actually less than where it was last year. So the four-point-seven-seven in the general fund, that's with the decrease in the debt service for a total overall tax levy increase of four-point-seven-three percent. So the general fund tax levy is going up with the proposed three-million-one-hundred-and-eighteen-thousand-three-ninety-three. Debt service going down seven-thousand-two-sixty, and then that's out to the four-point-seven-three percent.
Okay, so the, the overall budget's going up by three-twenty-four percent, but we're only, we are, I can't use the word only, we're increasing taxes by four-point...
Four-point-seven-three overall.
Four-point-seven-three, because that's a smaller part of the budget, it's not the entire budget.
Correct.
One other thing I'd like you to, to emphasize a little bit here is, looking at the budget comparison that you did with the line items, we have a hundred-and-seventy-nine-point-two-five percent increase in facilities. I know you mentioned, there you go.
Yep.
All right, so you've got a two-point-eight-six-six million-dollar budget this year for facilities, when in actuality, if we weren't doing this project with the town, we would have a decrease of something in the neighborhood of twenty or thirty percent, right?
Oh, even more, even more than that, yeah. Two-point-seven is strictly the Daigos Field Project, so that other hundred-and-six, hundred-and-sixty-six-thousand, that's what we have in there for equipment that we need and the other small projects that we're planning to do.
So we're only spending one-hundred-and-sixty-six-thousand this year on that, on those items, and the town is covering the other balance?
The two points, correct. Yeah, they, they, they included some...
Let's get that out loud. It's not us.
Yes. The township in their twenty, in their twenty-two, twenty-four budget, they included an appropriation. I believe they sent out a notice as well with the tax bills that went out last year, where they included a one-point-two million in their budget last year as part of the project for lighting and engineering study. And now they're looking to, hopefully, they haven't done their budget, presentation on our budget yet, but they've informed us that they're looking to include some more funding this upcoming twenty-twenty-five year for, on their budget to offset this project. So overall, it's a two-point-seven million-dollar roughly project that we're budgeting for to offset the township's contributions.
I, I should have started this with, I'm very impressed, Dr. Kitchen and Bill, with the work that your staff's put together. I've seen it from where it started to where it's gotten now, and some very, very sharp pencils and some very sharp minds. Thank you.
Thank you.
Credit goes to Mr. Schultz. Mr. Schultz has done nothing but try to go through and find every dollar he possibly can for months. So while I'm more than happy to take praise on things like this and stand up here and talk through, because we've had the conversations, the reality is Mr. Schultz is the one who has, who has really, really worked day and night to get this done.
In that case, then I'll thank Mr. Schultz.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Tell the rest of Iowa, if you see her.
That's how your marriage lasts longer.
Billy, thank you for this. It's, it's excruciating. I know it.
It is, yes.
And I did, I went line by line. I know enough about the district and the community to know that unfortunately, it's unacceptable. The county is raising us this year, the township is raising us, we raised taxes last year twice, and I don't know how much more the community can take. I think we need to have a further discussion about the ELA mini-courses at the high school. I think there could be savings there and classes that are fewer than ten students. I mean, we have to, it's heartbreaking, but I, I think these are terrible times and we have to have, we have to have more, we have to have more to give the community than just what we're giving them. I also have another question. Are staff members still being offered incentives not to take the benefits?
Yes, they are.
And how much is that?
That is two-thousand dollars for every staff member who's eligible for benefits, who decides that they don't need the benefits and proves that they have other coverage.
Do you know offhand how many staff members that is?
I believe the number, I believe it was about a hundred.
Okay, okay. All right, thank you.
Just to that point, the maximum allowable amount to offer is five thousand, so obviously we're...
Five thousand's good.
Unless you want to cut it.
We're going to go increase that amount.
Exactly. It's going to increase the insurance by ten cents.
I, I, that's where my question lies, is it's in the insurance. I'm very concerned about the state program because it's supposed to, grandpa, it's supposed to come to sunset this year, and we have no idea how that's going, you know, how that's going to impact the district. Clearly, the state is not going to take on that impact, and we are going to have to do that, which I think is going to really knock us. In, in the increase in the, in the benefits, you feel that that ten percent is even going to be realistic?
Ten percent, so ten percent...
The ten percent increase?
Yeah, ten-point-two-six overall.
Yeah.
I think that is, talking to our benefit provider, he's quoted us somewhere between, between seven to nine percent. So I think that compounded with the decrease in the contributions that we anticipate, it could be, maybe we get lucky and not a lot of people switch this year, just going on trends over the last number of years, it's been a steady decline with people switching plans. Like you, like you said, Mr. Van Dyke, back, the, the goal of this EHP plan was, it was sold as it was going to save districts money, and I don't see how that's possible, and I don't see how they're going to, the state's going to have an actuary prove that to anybody because the, the plane, the plane costs aren't very different, but the contributions are huge, the amount of differences.
I think it was to appease the, the teaching side of it, which, which I understand because it, it lowered the amount that some, because when you looked at income to, to what it was costing somebody, there are teachers who are senior teachers here who have been with us for years and years, who were paying more, more in benefits, and they were making, they were taking home less than they were maybe five years before that. And I don't know if it was really put out there to us that that's what was going to happen, and I, and I, I understand it.
Yeah, and the unfortunate thing is there's nothing we, as a district, can do about it because it's state law and we have to follow the percentages that they lay out in their guidance. And until it sunsets and they tell us what the next steps are, pretty much just have to deal with what comes.
So while certain things like benefits, the percentage... Certain things like benefits, the percentages that you see and that are budgeted for are anticipated costs, but they're not arbitrary, right? So, so it's not Billy saying, oh, well, you know, this is what I think the trend is going to be. There are experts that, that guide him through our providers and things like that, and they tell us, that's not, and that goes for more than just benefits, it also goes for your utilities, things like that. We're told what we should be budgeting for based on what their anticipated costs are. They're not always right, but they're usually pretty close. So, you know, sometimes we do a little better, sometimes we do a little worse. That is a huge problem because that means the dollars don't exist. So obviously, you know, ten percent, we've seen numbers, many districts have seen numbers that are much higher than that, that was ten-point, ten-point-two-six. We've seen numbers that are higher than that before, but again, it's based on what we're being told is the appropriate amount to budget for, for that for next year.
I, I do have a question too about, about the utilities, because I, I don't know about everybody here, but my utilities have almost tripled. My, my electric has almost tripled. I, I, I was completely blown away by that. So I'm, I'm a little concerned at what rate you're going, you're, the, I mean, between that and, and fuel and the fact that, I mean, I, I hope if there's anybody out there that wants to drive a bus, that they please come in and sign up to drive a bus here because the contracted runs that we're paying for is unbelievable.
Right.
So I, you know, those are, I, I think that you can't stress that enough.
Right.
That would cover CDL costs.
And it'll be part of next week's meeting, but we plan to, with our energy consultant, we plan to go out to auction, if work is authorized at the eighteenth meeting, we have an energy auction scheduled for the twentieth, to see what kind of rates we can get for the next, next multi-year cycle.
I'm going to go back to a couple of things here. On the, on the energy thing, that's one of the reasons we need to get the capital projects done, like UGL with the windows and...
Right.
Because you're literally, I guarantee I'll tell you, we all had that debt and said, close the windows. That's really what's happening here. But more to Terry's point, with some classrooms that we have that, that may have less students that would be optimal for us, I don't think we can get rid of looking at them many because you'll have teachers, either you're not doing anything, or you want to put other classrooms with twenty and thirty-some students in the high school. Somewhat correct on that point, someone you're saying?
Yeah, so, so we try to schedule as efficiently as possible, and at a secondary level, so middle school, high school, you're never going to have a perfectly balanced schedule where all your classes have the same number of kids because we have different offerings. And, and, and Mr. Dwyer, I know you're fully aware of that, but I, but I think it's important to make note of because you're going to have some classes that have fewer kids just because there's less kids that are qualified to take certain AP courses, things like that. So if we have a class that has ten kids in it, eleven kids in it, cutting that class doesn't necessarily save any money because cutting that class, unless you can save a staff member, you haven't saved any money. You've just placed a greater burden on other classes while also limiting the course offerings that you have. So with that in mind, as we go through, we really try to make sure we're as efficient in scheduling as we can possibly be. Look, one of the things that I know we have discussed is, is looking at our scheduler, right? Our student information system is our scheduler, and is, is it the best tool for creating that balance? Because there are other options that do exist, we want to investigate those things. Doesn't mean we're making a change, that's all to be determined, but I think we need to make sure we're as efficient as possible when we're scheduling, but you will never have a perfectly balanced schedule at the secondary level and have appropriate offerings for a competitive high school. So I think that's kind of, I think that kind of speaks to the point that you're trying to make. Thank you.
I just want to point one thing out. Having a competitive high school doesn't mean you have to have mini-courses. That was a model that was okay in like the, the middle seventies. It was gone before nineteen-eighty because kids need that traditional schedule. And if they have that, you're getting the same classes, you're getting the same books, so to speak, but you're getting a whole year of education, you're filling your classes more evenly, and you might be able, I hate to say this, you might be able to eliminate a position, or possibly two.
I'm going to disagree, I'm going to disagree with that whole argument.
You don't disagree?
I would agree with you a hundred percent. Some of these mini-courses allow us to provide students with a, an opportunity to take courses they may not have otherwise, the opportunity to, to do things in classrooms that we may not have been able to do. It provides opportunity for them to work with other students that they may not be in. You're talking about mini-courses, not full-year courses, those things. A course that only has a few students in it is a completely, they're just a check. But if those teachers are fully engaged in the periods that they can work, you're not gonna save anybody money by shutting down these courses, and you're gonna take away things from these students. And I look back at my own high school career back in the day, I took many courses that got me places where I never would have taken them, because I wouldn't have been able to fit them in and do other things if I had full-year courses.
I'm not talking about electives, I'm talking about the genre of courses.
Genre courses.
The genre of, not the electives. I agree with you on the electives. I'm talking about the genre of courses.
So my response was more just on the broader sense of our ability to provide balanced scheduling. It's never going to be perfectly balanced, but the discussion about what courses we should be offering, the discussion about, you know, which different sections we'd like to see more kids in, that to me is a separate conversation. While I understand that it's impactful on the budget, I view that as a secondary conversation, because our goal is to make sure that we're staffing as efficiently as we possibly can for a schedule that is as balanced as we can make it. But I don't know that looking at individual specific courses is a conversation that is going to have some major impact on how we budget for the high school. Because again, I think it's challenging to say, well, we don't wanna run this course, and then assume we're gonna be able to save an entire staff member. Our job is to make sure that as we're looking at staffing, that we're doing those things, that we don't have more staff members than we need, we have the appropriate number. But I think as we look and we sit down and go through scheduling, that's something that the district has done a pretty good job of over the past several years, of making sure we are appropriately staffed, particularly as you've gone through those years of S2 cuts, where you have kind of stripped down, and you have fewer staff than you've ever had previously. But I think the number I would point back to is that 11:1 student-to-teacher ratio, we're directly in line with the average for the state. So we don't have some outlandish number of teachers for the number of students that we service. It is in line with what the state average suggests is appropriate.
Brian, I just thank you so much for this presentation, Billy, because I know that you guys have worked so hard on it. I just would like you to reiterate for our huge audience out here, that without taking the 4.77% on the tax, right, us taxpayers, we live in this town, it's gonna be our bill, right? What are we saving? We are saving cuts to the classroom, we are saving staff, we are saving people's jobs. There have been surrounding districts that we all know of that are cutting mass staffing, and we're not doing that with this proposed budget, correct?
What we're looking at is trying to make sure we're limiting the impact to students, right?
Right.
So obviously, the fewer programs we have to get rid of, the fewer staff members we have to get rid of, the better we are in terms of what we're able to offer. So if we had to cut more out of the budget to get that number down lower...
It would touch the classroom.
We would feel it. You're gonna, I could not tell you there would not be a classroom impact if we were taking more money.
Thank you for that.
I'm sorry, I just have a question for Dan. Dan, can you anticipate, I mean, this is only a speculation thing, can you anticipate how many possible students we could keep from going to PCTI with the pathways program that you've brought to us?
I think at this point, it's probably premature to predict that.
Yeah.
I think next year, we'll have a much better idea. I did get, it was a request recently, to take a look at our existing West Milford students who are at PCTI and the programs that they're enrolled in. I do have that information. We intend to, you know, reach out to all of the West Milford residents who are in different classes, at different schools, and highlight our pathways. But again, I don't...
That's a wonderful program.
I don't think we can predict that at this point in time. I think momentum will gain in the next year, when we have that full year of pathways under our belt, and then also the ability to offer more, you know, more opportunities.
Yeah, I think to piggyback off of that point specifically, I think whatever that number is, we don't know how many, we don't know what the interest is yet, but whatever the number is, I think it's safe to say that the number of kids that will stay here as opposed to going elsewhere will only increase when we offer more opportunities for them. So as we add more pathways going forward, we're creating fewer and fewer reasons for them to choose to go somewhere else. So that's, I think, I echo your sentiment, that it is a great program, and I think that it has the potential to have a really positive impact on our own enrollment.
Just so everybody understands, that might not understand what a pathway could provide for West Milford, would we be able to then not only retain our students, but also get tuition students for these pathway programs also? Is that something that could be in the future?
I mean, I don't wanna...
Just ask him.
I feel like that's, I think it's a fair question. I don't know that we have any idea what it's gonna look like until we actually see it rolled out for our own students. So Dan, I don't know if you have any comments on that, but I feel like, right now, we wanna roll out the pathways for next year, see what the level of interest is, and then figure out, you know, do we need additional sections because we're able to do these things? Does it mean then we can pull from other sections that we have where there is a reduced interest? But the goal is to make sure that we are appropriately servicing the students that are looking to have these career pathways, career-recognized credentials when they leave high school, so they can go into the workforce, and the more opportunities that exist like that, the fewer kids need to seek them elsewhere. Any other questions? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Great job, guys. Great job.
I did it.
We will go on to public comments. Has anyone signed up to speak? Mr. Schultz?
Yes, Jim Foodie signed up to speak.
Okay. Mr. Foodie, I just have to say a little, all speakers will have five minutes to speak until a period of 30 minutes transpires. Before speaking, please state your name, group affiliation, and address for the record. Members of the public who have requested to speak prior to the meeting will be recognized by the chair first. After speaking, all speakers are asked to sign the register provided and give their full name, group affiliation, and their address. All statements shall be directed to the presiding officer. No participant may address or question board members individually. All speakers are expected to have read the statement within the agenda regarding the regulations concerning public comments. Members of the public are reminded that they are legally responsible and liable for their comments. And this is on agenda items only. Mr. Foodie?
James Foodie, my affiliate affiliation, West Milford taxpayer. I came here tonight because I'm concerned of what's going on in the town. And I kinda, you got me with the 4.73% interest or tax levy. The town I hear is going to, and I hear the county is doing that as well, so you're close to a 9% tics increase, which is for everybody, it can't go there. So my first thought that I wanted to say was, you should look into Pontonian from the get-go, when I was on the board, back in, you know, 2015 through 18. Every year, oh, they're gonna, next year, they're gonna make money, next year, they're gonna make us money, and we keep running into these $100,000 losses. That's one thing. But I, this is what I think is most important. You know, you guys, I saw in the budget presentation, you're gonna put money into Upper Greenwood Lake School Windows, Septic Systems, et cetera, et cetera. I think you guys should all take a step back and say, what can we do here? My thought is, and I hope you guys think about it, because there's a lot of things that I proposed when I was on the board that you've actually ended up doing. So looking at the schools in the district, and the amount of students that we have, the audit report for last year says 3,107 students, I believe it was. When I add up the students in each school, including people, the kids in Highlander Academy, we're 2,950, all right? Now, if we look at the high school, which has a capacity of 1,840 students, we have an enrollment of 923. I mean, that's, we're at half capacity at that building. What I propose to you guys, and I hope you really think about it, because you could get yourself in your pocket probably close to six to seven million dollars in savings. That's a number that you guys should seriously consider. So here's what I propose. I propose taking McApin, the students 7th and 8th grade, put them over at the high school. I then propose utilizing Westbrook School, Maple Road School, and McApin for our elementary kids. You've got more than enough capacity, and you've got excess capacity, so if God, if we grow some, you've got room to grow. And at the same time, if we grow exponentially, it's cheaper to add a couple of classrooms to each individual school than it is to have, you know, four or five elementary, well, five elementary schools right now, excluding Westbrook. So I mean, you guys could really put some savings, not only in to the district, but in the taxpayer's pocket. This is just, I mean, we're the highest in the nation in this county. And that, it's getting to a point where we need to stop, we really need to think and say, how can we do this? You could have one general campus, Westbrook, McApin, the high school, and Maple Road. You could either lease the other buildings out, sell them, do something, but you've got an opportunity, if you sit back and think a little bit outside the box, instead of just trying to keep every school open and open. This was part of the reason why the state took so much money from us, because we were not being thorough and efficient with the education that this district was giving to its kids. So the state said, okay, take some money, take a little more, take a little more. And hopefully, the idea was that we'd all get on a bandwagon and save, you know, the taxpayers and the district a lot of money. Didn't happen here. And that's why, I don't know who it was that mentioned it, I think it might have been Ms. Dwyer, other districts are doing a lot of staff cuts.
It was me.
It was you? Okay.
I'm sorry. Yeah. Sorry.
But it's something that you guys should really take into consideration, because 4.73 or 4.77 is just, it's not a sustainable number. You need to sit back and, God forbid, you want me to give you more ideas, I could give you more, I could keep going and going and going, but you guys got an opportunity to save a lot of money, if you think just a little bit outside the box. And I hope to God that you consider it, because you got no problem, you know, raising taxes 4.73%, you know? And if people in the district, I'll be done in a second.
Okay.
It's not like we got a line out the door for 30 minutes. But it's a couple of things that you does. One, it gets all the school, the elementary kids together, it creates more of a pride mentality, instead of kids coming from different schools when they get to McApin and then beaten up on the ones they don't like. One, that's one thing, but the money that we could save and run this district really, really, really well, and put it into programs, instead of, you know, thinking about cutting them. So I would hope, and I'm gonna keep coming back, hopefully, I see something happen. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Foodie. Anyone else wishing to speak? Seeing none, can I have a motion to close public comments?
Close public comments?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So I believe there's no changes to the agenda as proposed, right, Dr. Kitchen?
Correct.
Okay, so can I have a motion to adopt the agenda? As presented?
I move to adopt the agenda as it's before us.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we have no education on the agenda today. Personnel, Student Affairs, Mrs. Riconno?
I'd like to move items number 10.1 through 1012.
Could I have a second?
Second, sorry.
Thank you. It's okay. And this again is Personnel, any discussion? Give you a minute to take a look. Okay, seeing none, roll call please, Mr. Schultz.
Mrs. Dwyer?
Yes.
Mrs. Jergensen?
Yes.
Mr. Lippi?
Yes.
Mrs. Lockwood?
Yes.
Mrs. Riconno?
Yes.
Mrs. Van Dyke?
Yes.
We have no hand carries for Personnel, so Operations and Finance, Mr. Lippi?
Yeah, I'll break this up a little bit. I'd like to move Operations Finance number 12.2 only.
Could I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
This is on the budget.
This is on the budget, yes. This is the budget vote.
Right.
Seeing no discussion, roll call please, Mr. Schultz?
Mrs. Dwyer?
Yes.
Mrs. Jergensen?
Yes.
Mr. Lippi?
Yes.
Mrs. Lockwood?
Yes.
Mrs. Riconno?
Yes.
Mrs. Van Dyke?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Lippi.
Now I'd like to move Operations Finance 12.3 through 12.5.
Could I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call please, Mr. Schultz?
Mrs. Dwyer?
Yes.
Mrs. Jergensen?
Yes.
Mr. Lippi?
Yes.
Mrs. Lockwood?
Yes.
Mrs. Riconno?
Yes.
Mrs. Van Dyke?
Yes.
Okay, we have no hand carries for Operations and Finance, so we're back to public comment, which is on agenda or non-agenda items. Anyone wishing to speak? Seeing...
Close.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we do not have a need for an executive session tonight, am I correct, right?
That is correct. I do want to just make one quick reminder to the board as we're wrapping up our committee liaison reports. If you are committee liaison, remember, we're putting those through Board Docs for next week's regular meeting, so if you, you should have access to do it, and I sent you the video showing you how, but if you have trouble with it, that's fine, just reach out. Ms. Conlon will, can help put things on for you, but just reach out to me and let me know if you have any issues.
I need private tutoring.
I got you covered.
I have something, so maybe, maybe tomorrow when I get done, if someday I'm gonna come in and let, open up my email, and she can train me.
No worries.
Okay?
We can help anybody.
Thank you.
I'll give you a hint, Terry.
Okay, at 8:11, could I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
We should adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor?
Any opposed?
Thank you.